It's four thirty PM on Tuesday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. We'll go ahead and call the City Council meeting for the city of New Ulm to order. Item number one, one point one, public notice to conduct meeting by teleconference. All councilors are here. We'll move ahead to item number two, consent agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we're going to drop down to item number six point three under new, six point two under new business Moody's Investor Service bond rating.
Thank you. John Burmeister, PFM. It's a pleasure to be here. It's been over a year since I've been able to come and address you, so I appreciate the opportunity today. I think you have in your packet the report from Moody's Investor Service. They did reconfirm the city's double A two rating. And they, and you'll notice that given this is a PUC revenue bond, they've also put the security of the PUC information on that as well. And then the other thing you may have noticed that this was, what they released was more of a press release because the city hasn't released their two thousand and twenty audit yet. They'll be calling Nicole up when that comes out and then they'll regurgitate all the new information for two thousand and twenty and beyond. And, and so when we do your bond issue in August, you'll have a full credit opinion with that new data from two thousand and twenty. But other, other than that, just keep up the good work and keep, keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you. So this-
We do need a motion to receive the report.
Yep, we would just need the motion to receive.
I'll offer a motion to receive.
Second.
Motion and a second to receive notification that Moody's Investor Services has assigned a double A two rating to the city of New Ulm General Obligation Public Utility and Revenue Refunding Bond Series twenty twenty-one A. Any more discussion? Is this a vote or a roll call?
Just, it's just a motion.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item. Six point three, mm-hmm.
All right, very good. Earlier this morning, the city solicited proposals from underwriters. We went out this morning with three point three million of general obligation public utility revenue bonds. And this is going to fund, there's actually two components to this financing. One is a, some sewer improvement projects. And, and there's also the refunding of the two thousand and eleven B that was payable from the electric fund. So we were able to combine those two purposes together into one big three point three million dollar bond issue. You can see through the sale of results, if you have that in front of you, we ended up receiving three bids. Northland Securities bid with your local bank, Bank West, and Robert W. Baird, and then finally in the back, BOK Financial Securities. And then right in the middle, kind of off to the right, is, there's a T I R, true interest rate. You can see that the true interest rate on this proposal is one point one percent. This is a thirteen-year term, so it's really thirteen years for a one point one percent. You can see the cover came in at a one point one four, four one percent, and then on the back, one point one four, seven, eight percent. So very good interest rates. They're still very low and they've still kind of held, held their own. They've gone up a little bit and they've come back down a little bit, but they're still very attractive. And then the refunding component of this, the eleven, the eleven B, we, we're going to take the proceeds of that portion, pay off the old bonds on June fir, June eighth of two thousand and twenty-one. And then we'll be paying on the new bonds. And so the, the PUC is going to save ten thousand dollars, little over ten thousand dollars per year for the next six years. And so it was good that we were able to combine the new money with this refunding, keep the cost of issuance low to take advantage of the low interest rates. So we were very pleased with that. And then the motion, you can see that after we did receive the bids, we did lower the power amount to three million, two seventy. And that resulting in the one point one zero four five percent. So that would be the final power amount of the bonds. And then we have been working with Nicole and Chris at the PUC for looking for other refunding opportunities. The city does a really good job of paying off your bonds pretty quickly, so there aren't a lot of opportunities on that. But there is another PUC transaction, two thousand and thirteen bonds, that's callable December of twenty-one. So we've worked with Nicole. We're going to try and combine that refunding series with the city's G O series in August. And then try and refund that in December of twenty-one and save some more money on that as well. Assuming interest rates still stay where they're at today, they're still looking pretty attractive. So with that, I'll open up any questions that you might have.
If the interest rates would rise this year, would you still plan to revisit that with Nicole?
Yeah, we'll want to, we'll want to pay attention to that because if they rise too much, then it wouldn't be worth doing. We'd probably have to pull the sale. Yep. But they're still looking pretty attractive today. So it's kind of a, you have to wait and not sleep at night and worry that rates aren't going to go up any higher than they are. And, and luckily, they've been pretty stable for a long time, so we just have to hold off for a few more months.
Is lower than last year's, is it not?
Now, this is a, this would be the PUC. I think it was probably higher because this is a little longer. The city only sells ten-year bonds. This is thirteen, so.
Parking rec rate in November was like one point one eight, so it was a little higher, but it's a larger dollar amount. And the city's, I think, last summer was just under one, I think.
Yeah, the ten-year term. Yep. Yeah, they've been remarkably pretty stable.
Yeah. Definitely that nice, they only stayed that way, right?
Yeah. Good time to be borrowing, not necessarily investing your excess cash.
I'll go ahead and offer a resolution, waive the reading, authorizing the issuance, awarding the sale, and fixing the form and details. For three point three million general obligation public utility revenue and revolving bond series twenty twenty-one A and authorize the mayor and finance director to execute the bond documents on behalf of the city of New Ulm to finance public utility wastewater projects and refund the two thousand and eleven public utility revenue bonds.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Matt.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Christian.
Yes.
Counselor Wormco.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to number item three point one, fireworks license.
We didn't do the consent agenda, did we?
Yes, you didn't.
Oh, yeah, we did. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, mine is still loading, but I'll, motion to approve three point one.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the issuance of a fireworks license for American promotional events, DBA TNT fireworks. To sell fireworks in the Walmart parking lot, seventeen twenty West Ridge Road, New Ulm, for the period beginning June twentieth, twenty-one, and ending July sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number three point two, pull tab bingo pull tabs and raffle gambling permit for Cathedral of the Holy Trinity.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a lawful gambling permit for Cathedral of the Holy Trinity to conduct bingo pull tabs and raffles gambling at Cathedral of Holy Trinity at six oh five North State Street on Sunday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Three point three, temporary on sale intoxicating liquor licenses for Brown County Agricultural Society.
I'm a motion to approve the issuance of a, of two temporary on sale intoxicating liquor licenses to Brown County Egg Society to sell alcohol at the Brown County Free Fair. Twelve oh one North State Street, one license for the period beginning August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, and ending August fourteenth, twenty-one, and one license for August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number three point four, temporary on sale three point two percent malt liquor license for Cathedral of the Holy Trinity.
I'll offer the issuance of a temporary on sale three point two malt liquor license for Cathedral of the Holy Trinity to sell alcohol during the church festival. Six oh five North State Street on six North Street on Sunday, June twenty-seventh, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number three point five, Plaza Garibaldi liquor license extension to outdoor patio.
Council President and councilors, before you have today, Plaza Garibaldi's request to extend their liquor license to the permanent patio they constructed. This patio, they were, they did construct during the pandemic and they wanted to permanently put that, put that out there. So they have constructed it. It is fenced off and enclosed at this point. And they would like to extend their liquor license from now until their renewal, which would be June, June thirtieth.
Yeah, they did an outstanding job of putting that patio together. It's beautiful and can't wait to use it. So I'll make a motion to offer the resolution and waive the reading to approve the request from Plaza Garibaldi, seventeen oh seven North Broadway to authorize the extension of their liquor license to a permanent outdoor patio beginning May fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, and until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Matt.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Christian.
Yes.
Counselor Wormco.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number four point one, preliminary plot of fourth second subdivision.
Madam President, members of the city council, Dave Schnobrick, Community Development Director. This particular request was considered by the planning commission at their April twenty-seventh meeting. And at that time, the request was unanimously recommended for approval with conditions. The applicant property owner is Jean Clark and Jennifer Clark. Street address of the property is two thirteen Casey Road. And the property is generally located south of Casey Road and west of Boundary Street. This particular parcel of property was annexed into the city in January of nineteen ninety-nine. A single-family dwelling is located on the property. The property currently consists of two point five one acres. And the proposed plat would subdivide the property into two lots. Both of the lots easily comply with city code requirements. The recommended conditions are, number one, that they pay the plating fee at two hundred and ten dollars. Number two, that they provide an electronic file of the plat in an AutoCAD two thousand and sixteen or newer format. Three, that they provide a ten-foot utility easement on all street frontages. And a five-foot utility easement on each side of the lot line between lots one and two. And then four, that any residence constructed on lot one will connect to city utility systems. And that the utility hookup charges will be determined by the city and Public Utilities Commission at the time the request is made to connect to those systems. I should note that that's part of a development agreement that was assigned with the property owners when it was originally annexed into the city. That would conclude the report.
Thank you.
Motion to approve with condition is the preliminary plat of course second subdivision.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five point one, performance measurement citizen survey results.
Council President and councilors, before you have the citizens performance measurement survey results, the city is pretty much where it usually stands. And, you know, the biggest, the biggest areas or the lowest scores always fall on street and in snow plowing. But even with those numbers, they actually did increase this year. And like always, fire is always rated, rated the highest. You know, a year with COVID and, and us not being able to provide a lot of services being shut down. Overall, I think we did very well. You know, looting, looking through some of the comments, you know, it is kind of the same, same kind of three things, utility bills, you know, utility rates too high. Streets are terrible, snow plowing, you know, can we get it closer to the curb? And that's always a battle every year, whether we're too close or not close enough, you know, we, we do. Jeff does take a look at those comments and he tries to get as close as he can, but again, you're eyeballing it. When the snow is out there, sometimes you can see the curb, sometimes you can't, sometimes we're over the curb. So we try our best. But overall, I think it's right in line with what we normally do. I think we're still doing a very good job. You know, some of the other things that kind of stood out, you know, were some, some blight issues were, were raised on there, which we have begun spring enforcement for residents. And we will be bringing the, the zoning ordinance on the business side of things back to council. I think in June, hopefully, the first meeting in June. So once that's enacted, then we'll, we'll start enforcement on the business side to clean up the commercial side of things as well. But spring enforcement is, is underway.
You know, I always take a look at, at this every year and, and I would have to say Ward three had pretty high scores in comparison to wards one, two, and four. But you're right, fire department always rates high and people always complain about the streets. But I noticed a lot less complaints and I was really surprised by, because of the high increase in our gas bills in February, that I thought we were going to get blasted on this survey and we didn't. We really didn't. So I really want to compliment our city department heads and staff on the work that they do because this really does reflect the overall work that they do each and every day when they come to work. And there was, as you said, the average scores are continually in the high or the satisfactory range, which is pretty awesome. There were none in the unsatisfactory or lower. And we have never had, that I can recall in our ten or eleven years we've been doing this, have ever had any super low scores. So again, hats off to our staff and I'm glad that we still do this. I think that we seem to see the same results, but that's a good thing. That is a good thing that we're doing well, so.
I myself was happy with it. I mean, the last year, everybody's aware, COVID, everybody's homebound, picking everything to death and apart. I thought we did very well surviving a year like that.
I'm going to just touch base on a subject that we did some work on last year that I see here that we haven't discussed earlier, railroad crossings. Chris, have we got any indication? You know, we've got some people making comments on here from the public, but we're going to be addressing any railroad crossing intersections this year? I've, you know. What's that?
Good news on that one. Joseph?
Steve Joe smiling.
I hear about railroad tracks all the time.
Madam President and city councilors, there are some crossings that the railroad is still have scheduled for resurfacing on some of the crossings in town. They haven't got to them yet. Recently completed the Boundary Street improvements. And then we've been identified in federal fiscal or state federal or state fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five for some potential funding that will come down from the state for some gates and lights at a, at three crossings in town. So if that holds true and that funding trickles down, at least there'll be lights and gates at three, three of the crossings in town. But yeah, we continue to work with the railroad as they have funds available and whatnot to coordinate the activities for the surface crossing upgrades that are needed at a few crossings in town. So that's the update as of now.
I know last year I brought up the new cat scores being relatively low and, and it still didn't increase as much as I would have hoped to. And it's an area that we're continuing to discuss, continuing to work on, trying to bring in more programming. I was hoping the high definition stuff that we added last year was going to help. So we'll see what this year does. We keep, continue to work on that area for sure.
I thought overall that the survey results were pretty good as well, pretty stable. And with COVID, have you noticed other cities struggling that kind of do self-checks with, because of COVID or?
I would say not. I haven't seen too many, you know, outreach to too many that, that do the community survey. But, you know, if you take a look at Mankato, I mean, they literally just opened their doors a couple of months ago. So again, it's, I think we're right in line, you know, providing the services that we needed to provide, you know, through the pandemic. You know, with the EDA, we were able to do a lot of those things to help. You know, we didn't have to wait for state aid or federal aid to do a lot of the programming. So I think we were a lot more agile than a lot of other communities. And so I think that kind of helped push us through the pandemic to help where we could and then focus on areas, you know, that we needed to.
So I'll go ahead and offer a motion to receive an order filed, the two thousand and twenty Performance Measurement Citizen Survey, and authorize the results to be submitted to the state of Minnesota to qualify for the funding for the Performance Measurement program.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I think I'm going to just, one more catches my eye here and it's from Ward one and it's just the cost of the family rec center, you know, just keeping it affordable for the community. And I know we're going through COVID and things and we're going to have budgetary and things of that nature. And when we do get up and going, we're going to want to see that facility used. And we have to be mindful of that because there's going to be a lot of families that might not be able to afford that, you know. So just throwing that out there that stuck out also.
Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number five point two, second consideration of ordinance number two thousand and twenty-one dash zero four two.
Council President, Council President and councilors, before you have the second reading of the micro mobility ordinance. And the parking rec commission at their April twenty-ninth meeting unanimously voted to recommend adoption of, of this ordinance. And had a, with a six to one vote in favor of allowing the e-scooters on the bike trail capped at twelve, twelve miles an hour.
Madam President, let me just, to clarify, I think the council is aware of this. This item and the next item on the agenda are interrelated. The second item depends upon this ordinance being in place. Because the license agreement is tied in with that. So that's the purpose of having both of them before you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
I'm going to just, I didn't have anybody in the community that said that they needed to have these scooters on the trails, you know, reach out, you know. I've, I've received the comments that they, we felt it's for walking and biking and, and they were strongly in support of keeping it that way. And that's just I'm going to listen to the people. That's the feedback I got from them.
Madam President, you know, I, I go back a few years when we looked at golf carts coming to town and being used on our streets. And, and so many people said this is never going to work. There's going to be lots of problems, lots of accidents, lots of issues. And talking with an officer today, he said there's been none. So I don't know, it's, you know, we're bringing fifty scooters to town and not all fifty are going to be on the bike trail. You're going to have minimal use on a bike trail. There's not a lot of people, I mean, the bike trail is used, but it's not used extensively where I don't think these electric scooters are going to be an issue. Now, I've had some calls for it, some against it, probably a few more against it. But I, I also then remember the golf cart issue and then people were so against that and turned out to be nothing. I just don't think all fifty golf or scooters are going to be running up and down our bike trails. I just think it's going to be used sparingly. It's going to probably be used by a few tourists that come to town and maybe want to see our bike trail or a few people that want to do something on an evening. I don't see it as an issue. I'd like to see it passed. And if we do have an issue, we can always bring it back and, and restrict it. That's kind of where I stand on it.
That is the main issue that they think the council had to determine, but that really relates to the second item, the license agreement.
I was going to say, we should just approve the ordinance and discuss it on the next one.
That's not addressed in the ordinance. That would be addressed in the license.
So speaking ahead of turn is what you're saying?
It's just, it's premature. It's got to be discussed, but right, it's all, all tied together.
I mean, so we can open it up, that part of the discussion. I'll just conduct the second, conduct second consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero forty-two, fifth series, amending the section four of the city code of the city in New Ulm relative to business regulating adding section four point six seven subdivision one through eight, micro mobility sharing options.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Madam President, I, I think this was intended, but it was the second consideration, but I think the council should formally adopt the ordinance.
Yeah, I think the resolution should be to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, I'll make the resolution to adopt the ordinance.
And I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Matt.
No.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Christian.
Yes.
Counselor Wormco.
No.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number six point three, or I'm sorry. Six point one, Bird Micro Mobility License Agreement.
Council President and councilors, so before you have the license agreement, which will spell out kind of the do's and don'ts that Bird can, can do within the city and- out kind of the do's and don'ts that Bird can, can do within the city. And looking at this, you know, there's, there's going to be sharing options coming in the future. You know, again, this isn't something that's going to stop its scooters. There'll be other things down the road. But this license agreement sets up the framework that we can adapt to anything in the future, you know, known or unknown at this point in time. And it sets the parameters of how to do things. So again, it kind of spells out, you know, promoting the use of city, safe, safe use of the city right of way, ensure the safe and reasonable operation of micro mobility, micro mobility operations and, you know, again, promotes economic development and quality of life. You know, this is something that other cities are doing, you know, across the US as we look at, you know, what, what are people using to get around? Not everyone wants to drive a car anymore. These are things that are going to be, you know, essentially, you can look at it as for every one scooter that's out there, you're essentially almost taking one car off the road. If I rent one for lunch to drive down to McDonald's for lunch, that's one car that's no longer on the road. Kind of the sustainability of stuff. So what the license agreement actually spells out though, is compliance with existing rules and regulations, data sharing and privacy, education requirements for the users, enforcement fees, insurance, parking of the scooters, the program scope, and the safety requirements. So Bird is really willing to work with us. They'll, you know, if we don't want them on the bike path, that's going to be part of what they want, what they'll program into the scooter that users are going to see. They will program the scooter so they have a top speed of 15 miles an hour, but it was recommended by the Park and Rec Commission to lower that to 12. They can program that into the scooter that when they're in that area, that the top speed is going to be 12. It's just programmed in. So it's not, you don't need someone there with a speed gun. Oh, they were going, you know, this other speed limit. They're going to geo fence that, geocode that as 12 miles an hour and the scooters will essentially be capped at 12 in that, in those specific areas. So I would like to call out, so one thing that the license agreement does call out is compliance with Minnesota State Statute 169 and specifically point 225. And so part of that state statute does state that a person may operate a motorized foot scooter on a bike path, bike lane, bicycle trail, or bikeway. And that allowing that is up to the local authority. So you as a council have the authority and Minnesota State Statute allows them on my, on bicycle paths unless the local jurisdiction doesn't allow those. So just, you know, more food for thought that under the state statute, they, they can be on, on the bike path.
Right. Madam President, I agree with everything that City Manager Dalton has stated. Under state law, basically the motorized foot scooters are considered, they're governed, people have the same rights and responsibilities as a bicycle user. They are supposed to be capped at a top speed of 15 miles per hour. If we're going to restrict it lower on the bike trails, we could do that. We also have the right to prohibit them from going on the bike paths. And that's, I think, the one thing that was to be determined. And if the council was going to prohibit it, we should put that in this license agreement. We would have the discretion to modify that depending upon, are we, depending upon the final language that we decide to use in this. We want to give the city some flexibility in being able to monitor this and adjust once we see them in operation. But the companies that are entering into these also want to know what they've got. They don't want the rules changed substantially so that the people couldn't use them. So well, you know, we're going to reserve the right though to control our streets, our rights of way. They're not going to be going on the sidewalks. That's illegal. So and also I think under state law, the users have to be at least 12 years of age. Small children couldn't be on.
Say that again.
Under state law, my understanding is that you have to be at least 12 years of age.
But on that though, I believe this company, you will have to be 18 years old.
Yeah.
To operate them.
Because that's a commercial company, they're renting it.
Right.
If somebody was a private owner and they were 12, they could do it.
They could do it, yeah.
But they can decide, you know, if anyone's going to challenge it, that's going to be the company's problem, not ours.
You know, I want to make a couple of comments. It was a lengthy discussion at the Park and Rec meeting. I mean, they discussed the pros, the cons to it. Everybody's aware it was a six to one vote. The Park and Rec Commission, they were willing to give it a try. I mean, we can always, if it doesn't work, okay, we're not going to allow them. We're having too many issues. I'm going to comment on Counselor Schultz. I remember when we did the golf carts on our streets, my God, the sky is falling and nothing became of it. New Ulm was all upset that, God, we're going forward. I mean, I would like to give this a try. If it doesn't work, I get 50 phone calls that says it's not working. I've had, yes, I was contacted by people weren't for it. I was also contacted by people who were for it. There were also people on the 50/50. One resident I talked to said, every day a bicycle goes by me flying at 15 to 20 miles an hour scares the heck out of me. So let's put, then if we're not worried about it, let's put the speed limit at 12 on the bike trail for bicycles. I think that's ridiculous. I'm willing to give it a try. I don't think the sky is going to fall if we give this a try.
When you try to think about who's going to rent these, and it's more than likely going to be couples, tourists coming to our town, oh, that'd be kind of fun, let's go do that. They're going to go other places too. They might go to Flanders, they might go here, they might go there, they might go down, especially part of the downtown bike trail that's really kind of nice and cool looking. And it's not going to be teenagers running around on these because they got to be 18 to rent these anyway. And they got to pay. I mean, they're going to pay in for use of this. It's not free. So I just think the quality of the folks that'll be using these are going to be good citizens and good to the rest of the people on the bike trail. I, I don't think we're looking for a problem here. So.
No, I completely agree with you two on that. People aren't typically going to rent scooters to go take the whole 13 mile bike loop by any means. This is for the tourism, for Johnson Park to go downtown. My only reservation, I mean, besides the fact that I was contacted, but nothing but negative, would be what are we opening up for the future? By allowing, I mean, this is an electric scooter, but what's the next thing that's going to be down the road that we're also going to be, well, this was electric and it says right on the signs, no motorized power vehicles. It was made for walking and biking. That was the only reservation I have, is that that trail was made for biking and walking. And that's what the people in my area that have reached out to me to talk about, well, what's to stop the guy with an electric golf cart from taking it down to go see the river? Well, what are we opening ourselves up for if we start allowing one little thing and one after the other? I know this, yeah, like you said, the sky is not going to fall because we let scooters out. And this is something we can always circle back if it is an issue. So in that, I'm in favor for.
Yeah. And we would just change the sign. So it'd be, you know, again, scooter, we would put allowed on there. Because I mean, again, you really look at it and I know a motorized bike is not considered a motorized vehicle, but it has a motor on it. You have to pedal it and then it keeps you at that same speed. And you can coast with that. With the electric scooters, the minute you take your hand off the throttle, you come to a stop. So again, almost safer at that point in time. And we're capping it. They are able to be capped at 12 miles an hour.
I like that. That's, that's just fine. Yeah.
And I was contacted, it was all negative, you know, people wanted it for recreational. That's what it was designed for. And, you know, we had the letter, I think all of us received, you know, about adopting, possibly adopting the state trail in that had segways, you know. And I thought to myself, you know, segways twice as wide than a scooter, you know. So at first I was like, you know, go for it, you know, because, you know, they, they're a scooter, you know, but we don't have any segways that I'm aware of within our community at this point in time. But, you know, and then I had the people that said this is going to help the tourism, you know, they want something to do. They might do part of the loop or, you know, go check out different destinations within the community and, and on that aspect. So, but I'm in favor of trying to get a lease agreement going here with Bird Mobility.
I saw in the paper today, Moreheads are going to have the same exact program tonight at their council meeting. So it's, they're out, this company's out and about.
I would like to just kind of make a couple of comments. You know, I did receive some feedback from citizens and residents about not wanting them on the bike trail. I too have been a walker on the bike trail and seen bikes whizzing by me. I've been trying to do some research in what other areas are doing. And the reality is that this is pretty new and there's not a lot of research that's being done on it. But going into kind of the golf cart, you know, question, you know, I have a piece of hair in my, where do we draw the line? You know, golf carts, when you look at the weight and the width of those, those, the bike trails and the walking trails, the recreational trail, and then do we want to define the word recreation, you know, is used for, for things like that. But it's not designed for golf carts, just like some roads are not designed to have, you know, 12 wheeler trailers or 18 wheeler tractor trailers on them for those reasons. And so, you know, not to say that this would have never come up with golf carts, you know, but, but I think that there's a time and a place. There's obviously a need. I think that it would be helpful with tourists. I would also encourage residents, you know, to come, take the, you know, go down there, take a look, go see the stops. The 13 mile bike loop has stops near Shells, near Harmon Park, near some other places. And so, you know, maybe this would be an opportunity for local people that don't normally get out and do those things. It gives them access and a way to do that independently as well. So just from what I've seen and what other cities have been adopting, I'm also in favor of allowing the scooters on the bike trail.
Madam President, there's one thing I think that the council should be aware of, and that's the way that the ordinance that was passed tonight is worded and how that might tie in with the license agreement and specifically the vendor, Bird, that's been negotiating with the city to actually try and bring electric scooters to New Ulm. The license agreement that's before you now says that it applies to micro mobility vehicles as defined in our ordinance. And the ordinance defines them to include bicycles, electric assisted bicycles, motorized foot scooters, any other transportation device. Bird is strictly scooters, as I understand it.
Yes.
But of course, there are different places throughout the country where you can rent an electric bicycle. So this ordinance would apply to that. And to the extent that there's been some discussion about, well, you know, this, these are scooters and how they operate, you shut them down, they'll stop, not like an electric bicycle. This would mean that if a company came in and wanted to rent electric bicycles, this license agreement would apply to them as well. So what it means is if, if, one of the senses I've seen, hearing from the council is if the vehicles would be allowed on the bike path, but capped at 12 miles per hour, that would then apply to anything that's coming under this license agreement, whether it's a scooter or a bicycle. The other thing with the bike path, and I'm sure that Tom Schmitz could straighten me out on this, but my understanding is we have an extensive loop in New Ulm. Part of that is kind of sheltered area where it goes away from streets and everything else, but it's all interconnected. And I, you know, as we're talking about the bike paths, if you want to have the speed limit apply, just so we're clear on this, does it apply to the entire course of all the bike trails or paths in New Ulm, or only those that are sort of sheltered and off by themselves? I think that's where people may expect more serenity and not as much speed. But we've got one system, as I understand it, in the town, one long continuous loop.
I believe Director Schmitz, what, didn't the Park and Rec, we discussed that about it's the, the entire bike trail. If they decide to go on it, it's the 12 miles an hour.
No, it's only the, on the street portion would be the 15 miles an hour because that's a literally a public right of way. But it's the physical bike trail that does, you know, that's not part of a city street.
That's the part that we could control.
Yep.
So if the idea would be, that would be done through signage and also with an alert to the opposite. But I guess if the, again, if these people, the companies are going to, you know, monitor their, cap their speeds at 12 on what they're renting, that's all they're going to do.
Yeah. So that's.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, but they.
Yeah, they're going to geo fence it. So on the bike trail where we say it's 12, they'll be able to go 15, but once they hit the bike trail, it, it'll limit it to 12. They'll govern it, yeah, through programming.
Technology, Roger.
But that brings me back to the question about the motorized bicycles as well. So how, how would the wording work? Is it an all or nothing with the ordinance?
Well, it's something where if a company came in, and again, this, this is going to apply to companies that are leasing these. It's definitely a commercial thing where they've got to get a license from the city to be able to rent these to the public in New Ulm. And the company that's inquiring and wants to do this is talking about electric scooters only.
Yes.
But the next company might want to do electric bicycles. And so that's something that would come under the ordinance, it would come under this license agreement. And I guess I don't know to what extent that would raise additional concerns. Presumably they can go faster, but they're still bicycle.
My understanding is from previous conversations, there were some cities that simply did not adopt an ordinance per se. Is that correct?
A couple of cities that I reached out to, again, just where Bird was setting up, they didn't even do an ordinance because they just treated them like bicyclists and they said, hey, it's not written in the ordinance. You just have at it, you go and you just buy a business license from us and you call it a day. You know, other ones did, you know, other ones have done ordinance and agreements. It really just depends on the city and how they wanted to follow the rules. But I think the license agreement and ordinance as spelled out, kind of spells everything out. I think it's really good. Kind of spells everything out. And again, it helps the company out too because then they don't know we're going to pull out, you know, pull the rug from them. Just like, you can't go here anymore. And it ruins their business model at the end of the day. Because again, it's, they're still trying to invest, you know, in the community, their time and effort. And, you know, they're relying on us to kind of be, show our full hand and show them this is, this is what we expect of you and this is what we expect from you. So.
You know, the reason definitely to have the ordinance and the licenses, I know when these companies got started, in some cities, there were really issues where the things were scattered all over. Whoever the local person was, was not taking care of them. And so what clout did the city really have?
Yep.
That's why we've got this, is if there are problems with that, problems with how they're running the business, we've got some specific things we can do to try and get it under control and bring it in line.
How long, Mr. Contract?
I think two years is what they're looking for at a minimum. And then we can, we can revisit it after a year again, or even sooner if there's issues on the bike trail and we just don't like it, we can talk to them.
If we approve it tonight, we could. And if we approve the bikes on the trails and scooters on the trails, if we decide it's just not working, we get a lot of complaints, we could, can we either include it in the current contract or have the contract dated so that we could review those restrictions for 2022?
I think in the contract, it states that in the license agreement, we reserve the right to.
Cancel or modify?
To modify routes and where they can go. I think.
Yes, I absolutely would. If, if we had a lot of issues, we're getting complaints from citizens, I think we obviously would need to make some changes. But again, I'd like to see if it's.
Counselor, we can terminate it on 14 days notice.
Yeah.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, you can terminate, we can amend. And, you know, Bird, you know, in my conversations with them, they're, they'll do whatever we, we ask as far as allowing, if we don't want them on the bike trail anymore, they will zone it off. So they, they can't, they won't work on there.
You know, one other comment in my mind, getting these ordinances started, we always have the power to change them. I mean, the way the world is going, everybody's preaching electric, let's do electric. I believe we're going to be back here with some other type of invention has two wheels and electric motor. I just believe it's coming.
Along with electric bicycles, I mean, that's, you're hearing a lot more and more about that as well.
Yeah, they're outstanding. But yeah.
And you got kids with these Hoover boards.
Yeah.
You know, and what'll come up next yet, you know, so.
But I'm absolutely in favor of Bird getting going with this, getting something new for the community. So I will make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the micro mobility vehicle sharing operations license agreement between Bird and allow the city manager and city attorney to make minor changes to the agreement as needed.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion?
How do we work the, is that with the understanding of what we talked about tonight with the trails?
That was in the ordinance.
It's already in there.
Or do we need that?
That was the first.
Okay. All right. Just making sure.
Any further discussion? Favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 6.4, reassessment of unpaid Lakeside Village 2005 Special Assessments.
And city councilors, Joe Stad, I'm city engineer. This is a item that comes up usually once a year, usually in the fall, but due to the number of lot sales we've had in Lakeside Village Edition, working with the finance department, we were gonna do this probably twice this year. The utilities and gravel roadway surfaces were constructed in 2005 in Lakeside Village. That development, for the most part, went tax forfeiture. Those lots are starting to resell. So in order to recoup those assessments that have not been paid, we need to set a public hearing to reassess those lots now that they've been sold and been constructed on. So this action item would be to approve the assessment amounts, and then set the public hearing for June 15th, to adopt those assessments.
Our motion to approve the reassessment of the following unpaid 2005 Special Assessments in the Lakeside Village Edition, $6,266.97 on Lot 17, Block 1, Lakeside Village, $8,355.94 on Lot 12 of Block 2, Lakeside Village, $9,748.59 each on Lots 3, 4, 5, Block 4, Lots 1, 5, and 6 of Block 5, Lots 14, 16, and 17 of Block 6, all of the Lakeside Village Edition. And set the public hearing for Tuesday, June 15th, 2021, at 4:30 PM.
Second.
And then a second, any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 7.1, report of claims paid.
I'll offer a motion to approve $3,994,104.59.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. With no additional business, meeting is adjourned.